Extend to each and everyone a very happy new year. Hope forward to exciting things in the town of Bridgewater. The agenda has been circulated. There are no changes from the chair or any additions or deletions. Hearing non-entertaining motion to approve the agenda circulated.
So moved.
Counselor Tanner, Counselor McDonald. All those in favor, the motion signify the appropriate manner. Opposed motion is carried. Under announcements, a few that I'll make and Counselor can add. First one would be Counselor Thorburn will join us a little bit later on. He is an executive member of Branch 24 of the Royal Canadian Legion. And the Legion lost a long-serving member in Leon Whynot, honorary treasurer. And the Legion is having a tribute service to him tonight, for him tonight. So Counselor Thorburn is attending that and then will join us later on. Monday, December 21st is the My Talk Bridgewater Day. But each of the members of council that were still in Canada took part in that Talk Bridgewater session. I think it was an opportunity for us to wish residents and visitors a very Merry Christmas and best in 2016. I think we have found that, I think, the year proved very, very fruitful with those exercises. So quarterly, we position ourselves around the community and put two chairs out, a Talk sign that says, "Sit down and have a chit-chat with us." And I think we have found that there's usually no shortage of people who will be willing to sit down and have a little chit-chat. They'll talk about things they like, things they don't like. And it's been, I think, well-received by the community. It's even been well-received by a former warden in the District of Lunenburg and a former deputy mayor in the region of Queen. So we are attracting them from all over the place. So I want to thank counselors for all their efforts on the Talk Bridgewater initiative in 2015 and remind you that we have a couple of months and then we start all over again for 2016. Friday, January 1st, I attended the New Year's levy at Branch 24 of the Royal Canadian Legion. Unfortunately, family commitment means I didn't get to the great levy at the Curling Club. But I'm sure it went quite well as well and would indicate to council. Did have a bit of a discussion with Sam Colacott, who is president of Branch 24, and Michael Nos, who is our fire chief, about the interest in a joint levy, Town of Bridgewater, Bridgewater Fire Department, and the Legion. In 2016, there was interest from me, obviously I raised it, and the other two groups as well. So sometime in the next month or so, we'll convene a little meeting and see what that might entail. I do want to extend our sincere sympathy from members of council and our staff in the town. The death to the family, the death of a former sergeant Doug Rayfus, a valued member of the Bridgewater Police Service for many years. So to his family, certainly extend our sympathies, our thoughts and prayers are with them. Friday, January 8th, I was delighted. I've sat on this committee for two years now, the Alzheimer's Research Breakfast. Significant number of our residents and community members are touched by dementia in one form or another, either a family member going through it. Over 300 people attended the breakfast at the Baptist Church. Tifa Snow, who is, the way it's explained to me, and this will tell you where my passion is, she's the Wayne Gretzky of the dementia world. So that's when I say, "Oh, she's good then." She was an exhilarating speaker that they challenged us all. And I know a number of us, my brother who's suffering from dementia, certainly changed some of the things and way I interact with him based on that talk. So it was very well-received and the committee is already looking at what we can do for next year. And when you look at the Research Breakfast in Halifax the day before, attracted just under 400. The one in Cape Breton was 350, 360. People were saying, "Well, you know, we're close to them." No, we were better. In a community our size, to draw 300 people for an Alzheimer's Research Breakfast, I think, says a lot about the community and its interest in assisting and supporting those who have this terrible disease. One advance notice I have, and that is starts on January 17th, the World Sledge Hockey Championships will be held at the Lunberg County Lifestyle Centre. Four teams, Korea, Russia, United States, and Canada will play from the 70th, I think, until the 23rd. Two games a day, not every day. And then a bronze and gold medal game. Certainly, we would encourage everyone to buy a tournament pass, please pop by and buy a day pass and take in a couple of these games and support these athletes. This is, I think, a feather in the cap for the Lifestyle Centre and the community and in attracting world championships like this. If you go in the Lifestyle Centre, you'll notice that it doesn't look the same as it usually did. There's some large displays. It either means that the players playing this tournament are unbelievably big, or this was a sample jersey to really promote it. And you'll see a lot of banners in the Lifestyle Centre, the Clear Food, Clear Water, Seafood Arena, and the TSN logo on the ice because a number of these games are going to be televised by TSN. So certainly encourage everyone to pop by and take in some of those games. Are there any other announcements from any counselors? I'll talk about what we did over Christmas. Okay, no, we won't go there. We have a delegation policy that's made up of two parts. One is for those who have indicated to center that they want to be on the agenda. No one did for this meeting, so there's no formal delegations. But there is an opportunity, if there's anyone who would like to speak to council for up to two minutes, you may do so now. And this is not one of those where now speak or forever hold your peace. You get other chances at future meetings, too. Everybody is content there. There are no minutes for this meeting. Go to item number six, which is planning items. Six point one is the Joint Municipal Letter to UNSM on the Municipal Energy Learning Group. Starting with the staff, one, Tammy Allen.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that.
Oh, yours up.
That's a request from the Sustainability Planner Leon DeBree for a letter from council to support the establishment of a municipal energy learning group at the UNSM. So there's a group of sustainability planners that have made similar requests to other municipalities. I think there's three or four that have already agreed to sign this letter in support. And just to give you some context, this is in relation to the town's Community Energy Initiative. So if you remember, as part of that process, Leon had committed to doing some peer education with other sustainability planners in Nova Scotia as part of that process. So if you have any questions, I had a little talk with Leon about this today, so hopefully he'll be able to answer them. But it's pretty straightforward. Really, the only thing, the only ask is a signature, there's no money attached to this request.
Someone prepared to bring a motion forward.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse this recommendation and approve the town's participation as a signatory to the joint letter to the UNSM Board of Directors as contained in Document 15-206, requesting that the UNSM lead the proposed Municipal Energy Learning Group.
Secondary. Counselor Millman. Any comments when we were secondary?
No, any time that there's a collaborative learning opportunity like this, peer-to-peer sharing across Nova Scotia, especially at this proposed price point, it's a great, great opportunity.
Any further question?
Absolutely.
Questions called, all those in favor signify the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Six point two is the proposed development agreement to allow office use in the R3 Zone at 140 North Street. Tammy Allen.
So I'm just going to pull up a context map, so everybody has an idea of where this property So as you can see, it's located behind Mr. Carey's existing office on North Street. And because this property is owned comprehensive residential, they require a development agreement to establish an office use. So we're doing things a little bit differently with this application. We're coming to you much earlier than we normally would. You might have noticed that we didn't include very much information in the report and no analysis in the report. So our intention is to get the applications to you sooner, trying to shorten the timeline a little bit. Because what we're finding is, just because of the way council meetings fall and because of the notification requirements in the MGA and the deadlines for application for advertisements in the local newspaper, it's adding a lot of time onto the process. So this way, we can get this application in front of you, get the public participation meeting scheduled, and then when we're going through that process of the mandatory notification, then we can be going through our information gathering process and starting our analysis. And also, because we haven't done any analysis yet and we're not going to do any until after the public information meeting, we'll be able to consider any information that we receive from that meeting in our analysis. And we won't be coming back to you with a couple of different reports that include parts of the planning analysis. It'll all be included in one report later on in the process, along with the draft development agreement. So this application is pretty straightforward. So I'd like to schedule a public participation meeting to happen in early February and just get the ball rolling on this application. So if anybody has any questions, then I'm happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions?
Do people enter off North Street? Do people enter off North Street?
Yes, so just, I can just call up the site plan here.
So they come up through the insurance company, past the foot clinic, and up the hill? That's the idea?
Yeah, I think my understanding is that would be the primary entrance, although I noticed on this site plan, there is a secondary entrance directly off Seasons Drive.
The driveway exists there now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's a ditch on Seasons Drive. Isn't there a big ditch?
Yeah.
No. Not where that driveway is. That driveway was the existing driveway for the home that used to be there.
Right.
Okay.
There's no ditch because I drove in today.
Yeah, so North Street is on the left of this site plan.
And I see on the thing that the pond is a natural barrier. Like, does Mr. Carey own property further up the hill? Like, will this keep on growing?
I couldn't answer that. This is the only application that we have in front of us right now. He hasn't made any proposals about the future use of that other parcel.
There is no pond there.
Okay.
There is no pond?
In reality, no.
Okay.
In reality, there's no pond.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is now. Go look.
You have to storm, yeah.
I know Gerswimmy Pool. You can put one there. So I think, with our vote, perhaps for Counselor, Deputy Mayor, and myself, who have been around here for a number of years, sort of ingrained in a certain process, this is really different. For newer councils, it's still a little bit different. But I think basically what we're saying is, anything we can do to speed up the process, I'm for. Get developers going, get things underway. I think basically saying is, we have requests, we're telling you what the request is. Now we're going to do all the work that will solidify that request, that will generate a report from staff, a recommendation from staff, and that's when we will make a final decision. So I'm comfortable with this. Motion placed.
Yes, sure.
Counselor Tanner, you can.
Just a couple of quick questions. And Mr. Carey's in the room, and so just based on the questions I'm going to ask, I want to clarify that Mr. Carey is a huge supporter in the community and a great business in the community and so on. I've got a quick concern, I guess, that this is now quite deep into a residential community. I understand it is R3, and obviously you can slide that in under a 4,000 square foot build, and it looks like a house. I mean, it almost looks like a house.
Yeah.
Has planning had any concerns over the depth to which this is being built into that?
I guess we haven't thought about it too much. Kind of intentionally, we don't want to go into the public participation meeting with any preconceived idea about what we're looking at, but...
I mean, for me, this is the kind of building I'd love to see on the front of North Street. You know, as you're driving along, it's just beautiful building after building after building, and it's almost a shame that it has to be set so far back, but...
So just to give you a little bit of context about the surrounding community, so this is the zoning, the zoning map. So it's really just the beginning of the residential area. So you can see, now I call that south, and Nick and I have an argument about whether that's south or what, but just below that property, it is zoned commercial. And I mean, I'm sure you're familiar with the area, it is quite mixed-use. So, I mean, that will be, certainly be something that we address in our planning analysis report that will be forthcoming, and we'll have a conversation about that at that point. Sort of, on a quick glance, no, I don't have a whole lot of concern about that. I mean, certainly if it starts going up further and further, and then at some point, we probably will start to have some concerns, and maybe once we start thinking about it a little bit more deeply, then there'll be concerns, but on the surface of it, no.
Well, I also, I assume that's probably the end point because it's all residential beyond that, correct?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
The pond.
Yeah. And just to keep in mind as well that that R3 zone, it is intended to be somewhat mixed-use.
Sure, no, I get that, yeah.
Okay, are we getting, is she prepared to bring a motion forward?
I am. I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater to refer the application for a development agreement from Danny Carey on behalf of property owner 3062815 Nova Scotia Limited related to property at 140 North Street to construct an office on the property in accordance with Document 16-002 to a public participation meeting to be held in the Town Hall at 6:00 P.M. on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2016.
Secondary. Counselor McDonald, any further discussion, question?
No, other than the fact that I'd love to see development in the Town of Bridgewater. This isn't anything but a final approval, it's just getting the process underway. And so I'm sure we'll have some questions along the way, but love to see local developers and business people expand.
And I certainly support it, too, but does the fact that the pond is not there change anything with the land, that particular piece of land, not the land that we're talking about, but the future land?
I'm sorry, the property is above that. It could, because that was designated as a significant water course on our environmental constraints map, so that might open that parcel up for a little bit more development if that pond is not there.
We probably should update our documents. If there's no pond, we should get rid of it.
I think that's based on...
If there is, we should let Danny know.
Well, if there is, we can charge him for waterfront.
Yeah.
Let's not go there.
Those maps were generated from pretty significant GIS data, so I think to make changes, we have to do a whole other collection, which is quite expensive, so...
Ready for question?
Question?
Questions called, all those in favor signify the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Thanks, Tammy Allen.
Thank you.
Correspondence for information, there are three letters from the Municipality of District of Lunenburg, appointing representatives from their council to committees that we jointly serve on. There is Christmas on Le Havre Committee, the Municipal Government Reimagined Steering Committee, and the Joint Transit Committee. So there are, it's just letters informing us who they're appointing to those committees. Item eight, correspondence for action, is the Region 6 Solid Waste Resource Management 2016-17 Budget Approval Request. Sorry, anybody on?
I could just speak briefly. I mean, there doesn't appear to be a lot of change from the prior year, other than the future project. And you can see that there's a $26,000 variance, but it affects both revenue and expense. You can see the municipal contributions, this year they've included it in revenue and previous years, so they funded it as a net expense. So I just want to confirm with her that that is still diversion credits. I would like to...
Yes, it is.
It is still diversion credits? It's just a revenue instead of net expense? Because normally, that's the way the municipal contribution is made, is that we get less diversion credit. Couple of other changes they've noted are, you know, almost a $5,000 increase in their administration due to the, their host unit increasing their fees. And perhaps, Bill, you might have more. I just looked at this, I kind of charged in there.
No, no, if I may, those remain, too. The host unit West Hans increased their fee, they host and do all the accounting and collecting revenues and that type of thing on behalf of the region. And so they increased it from, I think, $5,000 to $9,000. And then the reason for the, the town share being included in the budget as opposed, we used to run it as an overdraft, and the auditors didn't like that. So they're going to have the municipal units contribute money upfront.
But still from diversion credit?
Absolutely.
And there are some small, you know, some salary increases as well.
So when I read that, I read that their expenses, 1516 to 1670, they're reducing their expenses by $17,000?
Yes, but 26 of it relates, there's 26 reduction for the special projects. So if you pull that out, which is offset in revenue, then there are actually some increases.
Yeah. Small increase. Okay. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendations of Region 6 Solid Waste Resource Management and approve the 2016-2017 Region 6 Budget in the total of $201,145 as presented in Document 16-01.
Secondary. Secondary, any further discussion? All those in favor, Counselor Tanner.
Just, why does this come so early to us? It's only in January.
I think they do it every year.
I know, I just, I've never asked the question before. It just seems so early.
I think the agreement requires...
Oh, does it? Okay, all right, fair enough.
All those in favor, the motion signify the appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Item nine, reports and recommendations. There is a recommendation of the Director of Finance a temporary borrowing resolution. Don.
So this is just, comes to you every year. If there's debt financing that's been approved by council, we need a temporary borrowing resolution for a couple of reasons. One, to issue debt in the future, we have to have a temporary borrowing resolution in place. And secondly, if we should have to borrow temporarily before we put permanent financing in place, we need this in place with a bag to do temporary borrowing. We haven't had to the last number of years, we've been able to manage it, but...
So prepared to bring a lengthy motion for council. Whereas... In the old days, we used to take the junior member of council, and they had to read the long...
Whereas Section 66 of the Municipal Government Act provides the Town of Bridgewater, subject to approval of the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, may borrow to expend funds for capital purposes authorized by statute. And whereas Clause 65 of the Municipal Government Act authorizes the Town of Bridgewater to expend funds for capital purposes of wastewater facilities and stormwater system, streets, culverts, retraining walls, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, acquisition of equipment, materials, vehicles, machinery, apparatus, implements and plant of a municipal purpose, industrial parks, incubator malls, and land, other facilities for the encouragement of economic development, public grounds, squares, halls, museumous parks, tourist information centers, and community centers. And whereas the specific amounts and descriptions of the project are contained in Schedule A of Document 15-205, we have therefore resolved that under the authority of Section 66 of the Municipal Government Act, the town borrow a sum of money not exceeding $1,121,500 to the purpose set above, out above, subject to the approval of the Municipal Minister of Municipal Affairs, that the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures of the town to such an amount as the council deems necessary, that the issue of debentures be postponed pursuant to Section 92 of the Municipal Government Act, and that the town borrow from time to time a sum or sums not exceeding $1,130,500 in total from any chartered bank or trust company doing business in Nova Scotia, that the sum be borrowed for a period not exceeding 12 months from the date of approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs of this resolution, that the interest payable on the borrowing be paid at the rate to be agreed upon, and that the amount borrowed be repaid from proceeds of the debentures when sold.
Secondary. Counselor McDonald. Any questions, comments?
Too tired to speak.
Deputy Mayor. This is only for interim financing purposes.
Right. If there, if and when there's a debenture issue, that will come back. And I would also point out that $225,000 of that would be just in case we need cash flow for the PACE program.
All those in favor, the motion signify the appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Item 10, business arising unfinished business. Second reading for the purpose of repeal of Chapter 163 Parking Lots Bylaw and Chapter 165 Parking Permits Bylaw, and second reading of proposed comprehensive parking bylaw. Mr. Hurdle, would you like to make any comments on those?
Maybe not a comment, Your Worship, on the documents itself, but just a quick summary for the audience in case they're hearing about this for the first time at home. The document the council's being asked to approve tonight is essentially the consolidation of two former bylaws and the revision of those bylaws from a housekeeping standpoint. So in terms of language, what we're talking about is the proposed comprehensive parking bylaw removes references to the non-existent Bridgewater Parking Commission. It removes reference to business occupancy tax, which no longer exists. It updates the list of parking lots the town is responsible for, and perhaps most interestingly, it extracts the parking levy from the parking bylaw, enabling council to, in the future, alter the parking rates by motion if it chooses to do so.
Ready to bring a motion forward? There's three suggestive motions, three steps that have to occur.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading to repeal Chapter 163 Parking Lots and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Secondary. That by Counselor Millman? Further comments? All those in favor signify the appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Second motion forward.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading to reappeal Chapter 165 Parking Permits and proceed to second reading of the bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
This is the second reading by law. And motion to update, if you want to echo the first motion, that would be...
And just change it from...
And just authorize staff to publish all public notices.
Okay. I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading to reappeal Chapter 165 Parking...
It's that one, I'm just going to add this part. Okay. Parking. Would you like me to read it as it should be?
Okay, because I don't have that, I don't know.
Counselor Millman moves that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading to repeal Chapter 165 Parking Permits and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Secondary. Second by Counselor McDonald. Questions? All those in favor signify the appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. And that then moves us to creation of the new single document.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed comprehensive parking bylaws outlined in Document 15-193 and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Secondary. Second by Counselor Tanner. Question? All those in favor, the motion signify the appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. 10.2 is the correspondence from Debbie Tobin, Executive Director of Epilepsy Association of Nova Scotia, on a Purple Day Epilepsy Awareness Month, which is in March. And they said it would come back to council today for us to, I guess, give some direction or what exactly we might like to do in relationship to that. There are a number of suggestions they made. The proclamation will come in February. Things such as lighting the Town Hall with purple lights. We don't light our Town Hall with any color lights, so it's difficult to switch them from nothing to purple. Obviously, switching the lights in the fountain is tough to do when there's no fountain in the river in the wintertime, so I'm not sure... So I'm not sure there's anything else we could do there other than proclamation.
What about like the floodlights in the sign on the corner of Aberdeen as you're coming into town? Does that have, we have floodlights there, I think, lighting it up.
I think at one point, hadn't we talked about the idea of the big round window of flooding that with a, from the inside with a purple light? Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's possible. Relatively, should be relatively simplistic.
I guess what we look from tonight's meeting is direction about what council would like to do. And then we'll follow up on that. So we have the, um, the lights at the town sign, a light in the third floor, fourth floor, fifth floor.
Yeah.
We're getting up there. And that, what used to be the round window, I think is now square.
Would it be possible to direct staff or ask staff to investigate other days? So there's pink for breast cancer, there's this color, there's numerous colors out there. And at some point, it's quite conceivable that we're all going to get asked to have every day a different color, which I have no problem with. But there may be overlaps for certain days, so this epilepsy may fall, interfere with another specific request or national request for. So if we, if we kind of knew beforehand what these other dates were, because the promise this group, since you promised this group, you've promised everybody. Does that make any sense?
The, the only two requests we've had to date was this one and prostate cancer with the fountain, turning all the lights there, which was a major difficulty. I guess we have to decide what we're doing for this one now. So we could, I just have to look at other dates, but if we're going to wait and look at other dates, then we're not doing this.
I would recommend that we do the proclamation.
That will be done, that will be on the agenda in February. And blue ribbons. We're having, or purple ribbons, right? More like a blue. Purple ribbons brought in, but we'd just be for, basically, us to wear during that.
Again, the same thing, there would be ribbons for breast cancer, prostate cancer, regular cancer.
And they are put upstairs.
Yeah. So we can keep them in the building. I have no problem wearing them.
Just one more. I noticed during the Afterglow Festival, they use the sign posts that are at the entrance to the old bridge, to the Champlain Bridge, coming by TD Bank. There's, and there are two red posts, and they're now bare. And maybe that's an opportunity for us to cycle through a awareness campaign signage, if they'll perhaps supply it. It's prominent, everybody sees it because you're constantly coming across that bridge. Do you know what I mean? Yeah. It's a nice, it's a nice, great location, it's never used, other than Afterglow. Made great use of it.
So where are we leaving this? I'm learning the hard way. We like to leave things hanging and then can't figure out why we didn't follow up on them.
So a proclamation, and the staff will investigate the various dates, the other dates that, that community groups and national organizations ask municipal governments to recognize through use of ribbons, colors, um, flags, a whole host of things, and see if there's something that we can come up with that. As I said, once you do it for one, you have to do it for others.
No, we don't. We've already said no to organizations. And I, and I think when we say yes to this this year, in no way locks council into, that's now an automatic every year. I think your request continues, you deal with your request every, that's why usually for organizations, you get a request every, every year. So I think it's not bad looking at what does exist. So I can, I can take it upon myself to, probably it's parts around yet.
Depends what we're doing.
It's looking at what requests are coming in, when you can, I guess.
Some, some might be different.
So the proclamation is automatic, so we don't have to make any motion to that. So I'm prepared to bring a motion that we, uh, do some research into what other requests are coming in regards to flags, lights, and ribbons, trying to develop.
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater ask or authorize staff to investigate the various ways of recognizing national charities related to ribbons, uh, ribbons and flags and, and, um.
Well, we have, we have a flag policy.
Yeah.
So that's, that's already.
No, but when they, when they would light them up. So if we had a, if we knew that for Cancer Society was the month of whatever, and that we knew that the, the Gay Pride was another month, and we kind of know a year in advance the various dates and when we can expect to place things up.
There's also like, it's like one month could have 15 different things in it.
Yeah.
But we, we have the policy on the flags. So if we're trying to come up with, that we'll make a list of things, and that's going to be how we will proceed every year for next number. That's counter to the policies that we have established, which is they're request driven. So for example, on the Gay Pride flag that we flew last year, that request came from a member of the community. As soon as that event was over, that resident actually made the request for this, for this coming year.
Help me over here.
Okay.
Sometimes she's very easy. Are we suggesting we ask staff to investigate buying ribbons, having us supply on hand?
Just what other, what other dates might be out there? So there's breast cancer, prostate cancer as an example, there's epilepsy, those types.
But they supply that stuff.
Right. All we want to do is identify that particular time. And if there is a color, so then to Andrew's point, we have the fourth floor window that if, you know, if, if we're going to go out and buy the color red, it might be cheaper to buy all the colors to satisfy all, all the organizations that want to have. Do you know what I mean?
I don't know, I think we're jumping the gun, like David said, or the mayor said, if, if they're actually coming in asking us, then we do something. But if they don't ask, you know.
Right now, the only thing that is being done with this request is we're doing the proclamation at February meeting. So we need to know, is there other actions that council wants to take? You started the motion, we just didn't finish it.
So yeah, so just further, just to direct staff to identify national, national holidays that would require some type of remembrance. I'm just saying be proactive, is all I'm saying.
Do a second.
A second or for what?
This motion, councillor Mailman. No second or? Motion is lost. Is there any other action you want to take on this request right now? Hearing none, then what will come in February is the proclamation. New business, item 11. Proclamation. Uh, this is the Canadian School Counselors Week, a request for a proclamation. Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
Before, before councillor Thorburn brings this forward. All right, is, is this the former guidance counselors in schools?
Yes, this is school counselors.
They're, they're called school counselors, not like guidance counselors.
Still counselors.
Still counselors.
Still counselors.
School guidance counselors, but yeah.
And they have a week?
Yeah.
Are you ready now, councillor? Yeah. Uh, whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their, their potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors helps parents focus on ways to further their education, personal, social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and self-realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the education process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater hereby proclaims February the 1st to the 5th, 2016, as Canadian School Counseling Week.
We have a second. Goodbye councillor Tanner. Comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Oppose, motion is carried. Uh, 11.2 is a sample that are support sent from the UNSM. For us to endorse the act of transportation policy framework. And the sample letter is there that was sent to the Honorable Leo Glavine. And it's there if we are interested in providing a, a letter of support on the provincial policy framework on active transportation. That's what we should counsel.
I move that town council for the Town of Bridgewater support the letter to be sent to the Honorable Leo Glavine, supporting the act of transportation policy framework.
Go second. Goodbye councillor Thorburn. Any comments, questions?
Another, another great opportunity.
I believe for a community that has endorsed a number of initiatives in active transportation, not to support a provincial framework. And you have to be very active in involvement. Seems counterproductive, so. All those in favor of the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Oppose, motion is carried. And I guess 2016 is off to a good start, because according to my clock, it's 42 minutes for council. So we tell council, enjoy the short ones because there will be a number that won't be quite as short. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second or? Moving second. Uh, meeting stands adjourned. I remind council, there is an in-camera meeting next door following it. Deal with an item.